Well. Sorry. Okay. Okay, so I would like to call this special meeting work session of the Board of Trustees with the Austin Public Library to order on Thursday, August 4th, 2022 at 5:07 PM. And in attendance, we have Matthew Weiss, Karen LaRocca Fells, Cecilia Quintero, Alfima. I mean, I don't see her, so it's hard. Goodson, Shandee Steller, Megan Papak. Am I saying your name correctly? Thank you, Megan. And Kathy Byrne. And we also had Alice Joslow here. And and we also have in attendance Mark Porterfield. So, oh, there they are. Great. And Marilyn Reed and Bob Gabowski. So our next step is to have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Matt, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. In this work session, the first part is Lothrup and to go over the building assessment review, which so far is in three parts now. First, we had our meeting, then we had our first preliminary report, and then we had a revision to that report. So I'm. Would anyone from Lothrup like to say anything before we have the board speak? Board trustees, that is. You might be muted.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
No, I think we can go straight away to, you know, the board. But unless somebody has specific questions, I think it's best that the board kind of leads the charge here.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Karen, do you want to go first with the request that you made?
So as you all know, Molly and I went through the report and asked for a number of changes. Some of them were just typographical changes. Others were more substantive, mostly to do with placement, potential placement of adjacencies and other areas. Some were correcting some parts that may have gotten lost in interpretation when folks were speaking with the Lothrup architects. The Bob, Marilyn, and Mark were kind enough to make those changes. I had emailed the board a document that listed all those changes so that you could see what we were asking for. And Marilyn was able to get me the revised report yesterday, and I sent that all to you yesterday as well. So I haven't gotten a chance to go all the way through the report, but I'm seeing the changes so far that I requested, that Molly and I requested.
Thank you, Karen. Let me see, I think. At the meeting, we had Shandee and, no, not Shandee, Alfima and Matthew and I were there. And I haven't had a chance to go through the revisions, or I don't know if either one of you want to say anything?
I think for myself, I'm sorry, because I'm enchanted, I would just love to know. Just in order of what's more important or what's most important and how we should tackle this. Just in your, in your expert opinion.
Okay, if I can just recap that, because I was having a hard time hearing you, Alfima. You were saying you would like to know what is most important to be addressed, sort of a priority list?
Yes, I'd like to know the priority list of what should be fixed, you know, just how it would work, American way.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
I just wanted to add that, I felt this would be an appropriate time to look back. A couple of years ago, we had a, an architect report, looked at the entire build at the Dattner Architects. And I felt that since we're approaching the time where we may be making a decision to have significant work done to the library and potentially go forward with a particularly large bond referendum, that it might be sensible to review the Dattner report in the context of whether there are areas that we should be adding to this effort and coordinate Lothrup's efforts with what we thought be a good plan. One of the things that came up in conversation with Karen was moving the teams downstairs. But that involves some construction, that involves some technology upgrades. And this is the time to do it, I felt. So I think going forward that that's something that we might coordinate. And let me add, there are trustees who are not familiar with the Dattner report, because it's from 2019. So at the next bell, we're meeting, hopefully Karen, or Karen and Molly can give an overview. By everybody with a refresher on what that report was about.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think that there were some good ideas that we talked about at that time that I would love to sort of incorporate into what we're talking about with Lothrup now.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to speak next? Alice?
Kind of on information overload. I agree with what both Alfima and Matt have said. I'd like some prioritizing. And I think that Molly tried to do that as, Molly and Karen. In the things that you said, you were sort of interested in organizing it and looking at stuff in terms of different organizing strategies. And I don't know how to combine the Dattner and this report either. So we have a lot of information, but I don't feel that I'm a qualified person to really put it all together. I need a little help with that. And there's a lot of implications. You know, in addition, he referred to the HVAC report as well consistently. So.
I agree with Alice. I was ill at the last meeting, and when I was looking at the emails and looking at the videotape, I was really kind of scared by how many more things are now added to the list. And I'm particularly interested in hearing about, I guess, the order of of executing the plans and the projects here. And I guess, how many life safety bullet points are we dealing with now?
Megan? Any thoughts?
I don't have anything to add on top of what folks have said. I think I had a similar experience, wasn't able to make the meeting, but watching the video was feeling kind of alarmed by what was shared. And I'm not familiar with the report that Matt referenced. But I can imagine that I would also be experiencing information overload if I was. So yeah, there are things that folks have shared resonate with me.
Shandee? Anything you would like to add?
Nope.
Okay. I, I, I did not read the revisions, didn't get a chance to. So I, and I really do want to look at that because I'm really respectful of the work that you put into it. But the other thing I did is I also went back and I looked at the scope of services. And I think if I'm looking at the scope of services, what you did, the, the first step was the independent analysis of the building's architectural systems. Purpose of identifying deficiencies, defects, deterioration, and necessary repairs and improvements. And then task one, and I think that, that was completed in your report. And this is very different than what the Dattner report provided us. Two completely different scopes of services. So combining the two is, as in what we have to do as trustees is quite a monumental task. Because it's like apples and oranges, in a sense. And this would be outside of your contract to do something like that, if I'm reading the contract correctly and what are committed to do for us. And so the next thing, the next step that you would have to do after, I guess, addressing the report is task two, which is it says you're going to prepare architectural written recommendations. And then you prioritize them as A, B, C, and D. And I was wondering, the architectural written recommendations, are those also drawings? Or is it another report? What is the format in which we would get this information? So those are my questions. I guess you've heard from everyone now, unless Kathy, you want to say something?
Great. All, all good comments and questions. So let's kind of handle them in reverse order. The report is a written document with photos that includes in a description of the methodologies, the findings, along with the recommendations in a prioritized manner already. If it needs to be fleshed out in more detail, we're happy to do that. Drawings are not part of the service. They can easily be added, but it's more scope for, you know, more, more fee. So the other thing is combining the Dattner and Lothrup efforts. We can also review the Dattner report and help you strategize common and separate paths to accomplishing both sets of recommendations. So if someone could send us that, we're happy to review that and see where there are common issues and where there are separate and distinct issues.
Thank you.
As far as the, yeah, priorities go, if you look at the second page of the report behind the cover page, the page one of the executive summary, it lists these three categories of work. The first and highest priority are the health, health, safety, and code compliance issues. Because where there are health and life safety issues, it's really important to take care of those pretty quickly. The structural and mechanical needs are important, but they're not unsafe. They just affect the durability and weather tightness and structural integrity and mechanical system efficiency. They're important to do, because, you know, if you've got a leaky roof, you want to deal with that. It's not a life safety issue, but if you don't take care of it, the infrastructure is going to suffer in short order. And then the third category is kind of the desired kind of things we'd like to do or ought to do, or should do if you have time and budget available. And those kind of fall into two categories. Less important building infrastructure, like the windows aren't leaking, but they're hot. So either replace the glass with better glass, or put better shades on them, or put a window film on them. It's not a pressing, urgent life safety issue. It's more of a building functional issue so that human occupancy can be more comfortable. So there are things like that that make the building work better that aren't urgent. And then the other subcategory there is, how can the library function better? By putting things and functions in different places, either in a big way or with a mild reorganization. You know, for example, if the offices are in the wrong place and they need to be somewhere else for a variety of reasons, that's not urgent. It's not affecting, not in a very measurable way, anyway. Kind of the ability for the staff to do their job. It would be better if the library offices were elsewhere so that adjacencies to other staff and, and location in the library are better suited to how libraries function today. So those are the three categories. Kind of must do, really urgent, life safety. Ought to do soon because it's a building infrastructure issue. And then should do if you have time and money.
Also, nothing under the structural issue is, implies that there's anything in the building that's in imminent danger of collapse. There's not, so, you know, the, the structural issues just deal with sort of, you know, building longevity issues and things like the roof that if they aren't dealt with will lead to further problems as the system continues to deteriorate. Now, we did not include, we did not include anything in the OLA report directly in this report, but their HVAC stuff would probably fall into our category two.
Thank you.
I just want, can I say something? I just want to point out. We only got this report yesterday night in the evening. And as I, so I reread yesterday night, the printed out report that I had. And I do see that you have significantly improved the first section of the report under executive summary as I opened it just now. So I do appreciate that you, you have responded to the stuff that Molly and Karen had very thoughtfully done, you know, asked of you. And, and that does help us very much in terms of you, you seem to have done the prioritizing that we had asked.
Good. You know, we want to make it, we want to make it as understandable. A view so that it's a usable document. But consider it a living, breathing document that can, you know, adjust over time.
Of course, of course. And so I, you know, I like to read things hard copy. So, you know, and I got this in my email after eight o'clock last night. So I read the original report and have not, as a lot of people said, had a chance to go through the newly revised report.
So if it makes sense to have you all read the report and then have us get together with you again, either virtually or in person, we're happy to do that. Because you might have other comments or questions that come up after reading it. One of the questions I have is libraries are no longer what they used to be 20 and 30 years ago, or even 15 years ago when your library was built, and they've become more like community centers. How important does the reorganization of the library's spaces matter to you? And where does that fall in your priority list? You know, I understand you'll admittedly say that the life safety issues are most important. But if the roof is not leaking, but is fluttering around and only held in place with loose pavers and ought to be replaced soon because that's kind of a Band-Aid. The Band-Aid is working for now. And if you say that more programmatic rearrangement is higher priority, then that's, that's okay. And that's not a wrong decision. Because, you know, the roof could be made to work for some time going forward, for example.
I think that's a very good, I'm sorry, a very good point for us to consider. And I want to, are there libraries within the region that you also could recommend that we visit? So that we can see some of the things that you just sort of referred to in terms of community?
Yeah, no, we've worked on a lot of libraries in the region. So places like Larchmont Library or Hendrick Hudson Library are two that come to mind. At Hendrick Hudson, we designed the new building over, you know, a period of time. And Jill Davis keeps coming to us with new projects to improve and expand and advance the library. So it's, it was designed as a kind of open space that was flexible. So as new needs come online, having a flexible library that can ebb and flow with the, the times is important. So that, that's a good one to go look at.
Thank you.
That's close by.
Yes. Will do.
And on the mechanical side, even though our agreement doesn't include mechanical analysis, because you already had OLA come in and do that, and they're the expert at that. Everything that we've done here in our analysis and recommendations has been, has took into careful consideration what Jim Dolan from OLA was recommending. And they have various options in their set of recommendations. And intentionally, because, you know, they didn't want to make their recommendations hard and fast until they knew what might happen architecturally in the library. Because if you have the offices now that are too hot, for example, why solve that problem in the office area and make it cooler, appropriate for office use, when the offices might move to another place and require some change to the ductwork distribution? So, you know, we've kept an eye open and toward the flexibility in their recommendations. And I think the next step would be as you hone in on what the priorities are and a specific project or set of projects you'd like to proceed with, then engaging both an architect and an engineer so that their efforts can be coordinated instead of separately is important. Whether you hire the architect and the engineer separately or not is not the issue. It's that when you hire someone to do something, make sure you're hiring the other to do the, you know, other component so that they, those two experts can collaborate and make sure that they're not at odds with one another. So if anybody wants us to talk about a specific topic in the report, we're happy to do that now. Or if you want to wait till after you review it?
I know, I would like to review it. We just received it. I need to go through it.
Okay.
How is, how is the, we have several, we have this very comprehensive new report. We have the Dattner report. What year was that, Matt?
Thank you.
What year was the OLA, Jim Dolan report?
The update was 20, I think, or 21, maybe, 21.
So how are they all going to be meshed together? That was what my impression was that this effort would sort of do for us, right, is to really give us a state of the state for everything together.
Excuse me. It sounds like several people said that they wanted to review the document before they spoke to our guest tonight. So it seems to me like that's what, if that's what you would like to do, then we should do that and then come back to have another meeting with that discussion. Rather than bringing up other questions when if you said that you didn't read the document, then, and you wanted to, then maybe that's what we should do.
I think also we need to be sure that Megan has, is introduced to both documents. I don't think you've seen either one, Megan, right?
No, I don't believe I've seen the previous reports.
Yeah.
Well, then, I think it, it makes sense for you to come back to us when you're ready to have a more in-depth discussion. And then we can get into the nitty gritty. Because anything we might say here is just going to be thrown at you, you know, fresh. And you, it might not have time to digest it, so.
Also, it might be helpful if, if we don't already have it, if you could send us the Dattner report so, so we can look through it too and see, you know, where we, where the thinking is the same and where it verges.
I'll go ahead and send that to you. The Dattner report was all about adjacencies. So I'll, and you'll see that when you receive it.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And Karen, is there anything that you need from us in terms of the previous reports for anyone that doesn't have them?
What do you mean, Marilyn?
The previous versions of like the first report that we sent out or, or this, I just sent you the revision, but I don't know if you need the previous report that we sent out.
Every, I have both of those. So if anybody needs it again, I can send it easily.
Okay, no problem.
I would love the updated report in the printed version that we had. The original report, personally. Because this is like the most up to date and responded to Karen and Molly's concerns. Do we expect it to be significantly modified again?
That's quite possible. You, you all are probably going to have questions and comments, but that's what it is. It's a living document.
Yeah.
So either you can print it off at your end, or we can send you printed bound copies, whatever you like.
Are there sections of the revisions that are significantly revised, like parts, pages one through 10? Or, you know, something along that line?
It really wouldn't be easy to just change, to just give you those sections. I mean, if, if you need printed copies, we should just print entire, you know, bound copies for you and have them sent to you. Because we also put page numbers on there. So, and we've, you know, changed some photographs. So it would be easier for us to just print you and, you know, bind new copies of the updated report and send it.
The changes had a ripple effect throughout the document.
Yeah.
I can, I would appreciate that, like Alice.
In addition, we made minor changes throughout the document that, you know, we saw things as we, you know, as we went back to the building to take additional photographs, to fill in things that, you know, that we, you know, didn't have adequate photos of as the, you know, as the comments came in. Other things too. So some of that stuff is reflected in the report too.
So I guess, Karen, how many would you like?
Why, why don't I ask the trustees to email me if they would like a printed copy? And I can
Why why don't I ask the trustees to email me if they would like a printed copy and I can send you that number? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That works.
Great.
Okay, good. In the meantime, we'll await the Datner Report and then we'll start reviewing that and um kind of putting together a summary of uh where there are common themes and recommendations that potentially collide with one another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Also, also, you know, take particular look at the, you know, the sort of list, the pri- the some the sort of priority list on the first page because you know, depending, you know, again, a lot of the structural things aren't things that necessarily have to be done right away, as Bob said. So as we develop a list of priorities, you know, there may be some programmatic issues that are more important than let's say fixing the roof. So you know, ultimately, you know, we might juggle some things around as far as priorities. You know, as that happens, you know, as we, you know, get your input.
Yep.
Hey.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So are you going to continue your meeting and we should depart or? Okay, I guess, or one.
Bye. We're talking about something completely different next. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, thank you, everybody. And now we're moving on to uh Karen received a request to use the theater and the parking lot by SNY TV.
Yes, um I went ahead and sent you the information that SNY TV sent to us um about the request. Um as you can see from reading it, they're requesting to use the theater to televise um the Democratic primary debate. The action and it would just be televised. There would not be a live audience in the theater. Um two issues with this request. One is that um this is not a request being made by a nonprofit or government agency. And our policy as it currently stands only allows our rooms to be used for requested for those purposes by those kinds of agencies, so I felt it was important for the board to review rather than for me to say yes or no. Um the other issue is because of the fact that they are televising this, they need significant um space uh in the parking lot and they need the space in the parking lot in the theater for essentially a period of two days, um a Tuesday and a Wednesday. We all know that the part the theater is not really the issue as far as that goes. Um the parking lot, of course, as you know, is, and what they are saying they need for their news vans is the um the the part of the lower parking lot beyond the circle um be nearest to the Moose Lodge being roped off for two days.
And so you've received this request and at this point it's simply a request. It's not something that you need to respond to it, right? You haven't done that yet.
Right, we we let them know that the request falls outside of what I'm able to um approve. And we let them know that I will be bringing it to your attention this evening.
Can I ask a parking lot question?
Sure.
Um would there still be accessible parking if they were utilizing that portion of the parking lot?
If they're using only the part of the parking lot beyond the circle on the side of the Moose Lodge, all of the accessible parking spaces are on the other side, so those spaces would remain available.
Okay, now I understand what part you're talking about. It's like the little end part.
The little end part, yeah, where the little garden, the little teen teen garden is. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think the probably the biggest problem we have is our policy. Because our we are supposed to um groups that are governmental or nonprofit are the ones who are at this point um able to use our facility. And this is a profit company, a profit corporation or company or news agency.
Right.
So we the problem is, is we can't ignore our policy. And we've turned down other groups.
Yeah, we absolutely have.
Yeah. Because they're for profit. And at this point, I I don't believe we have even discussed changing our policy again. And I don't know that uh we're at a time when it's appropriate to do so.
Right, we have we had discussed that we would like to revisit it um and that we would like to consider other groups in the future, but I agree, Amanda, we are not at that point.
Are we at all concerned about um that part of the parking lot being able to deal with the weight of news vans?
I'm always concerned about that. Um we we do allow parking in those spots that are closest to the building, so and we have had, as you recall, um and I think it was instrumental in bringing this to us, we did have the FEMA. Um it wasn't a van, it was a like a big um truck that came to help people process claims. And they did um they were able to use those parking spaces that are against the building. So we have had a similar thing happen in that regard.
I think it's an unusual situation that the public debate for an upcoming election is having difficulty finding a home. And it is the policy something that uh I'm trying to say here, do we think it's the right policy and or do you think that it's just convenient for us to say no to it? By the words, do we want away the the purpose or is it easier for us just to have that policy blanket?
Um it's you know, I think when we decided on that policy, I don't necessarily think, or at least I didn't think about um a news outlet wanting to use the library. And one could argue that a public debate, even though it's being broadcast by a for-profit news outlet um would be for the public good because it has to do with a an election of government officials. Um so a- and I think that's why, you know, it would have been very easy for me to just say, no, forget it. It doesn't fit into our policy. I think that's the reason why I was um eager, not eager, why I brought it to the board.
So what I'm getting at is if if this were um live where we allowed arguments, say fifty people in the auditorium, and they happen to broadcast this live um debate with an audience, would that change the consideration or it just still falls under uh a profit-oriented company that we have a policy?
Well, I think that if um if, for instance, the League of Women Voters organized the debate and a news outlet came to to film it, that would be easier to say yes to do our policy because the organizing organization is um a non-for-profit, but the intent is the same.
The intent is the same, but who's sponsoring the debate? I'm not not aware.
Um.
It's not the cable company, is it?
The way they made it sound, it was.
I was suspicious about that. Okay, then the policy is a policy. I would stand by the policy.
I agree. I mean, I feel like judging and given what the topic and what the event is for, I um you know, I think that we should allow them to do this. Um you know, I feel like we should at a certain point maybe revisit our policy. But I think if we're talking about, you know, community involvement, what's more involved than exercising your right to vote, especially at a time like this? Um and we're, you know, we're focusing heavily on our diversity plan. So I think that um we should make a concession for them to, you know, just because it's about voting and that's something I think important that people need to see.
I I think voting and having a debate about voting is really important, but it doesn't mean that we're the only place in town where they could have the debate. I'm concerned about other requests that the library has received to utilize the building and we've basically said, no, you can't because of our policy. So how when, you know, it's we're saying to someone person, well, this is more important to the community than you are. And it could be really important.
We're, I mean, at certain point in times, policies change. You know what I mean? And then you adapt to the policy, so I think at this time allow the, you know, everything is for you know, I get what you're saying and no, you know, no one wants to feel like their event wasn't good enough. But when we change our policy, we change our policy, you know, they're up for they're always, you know, policies are up for revision.
So we need to change the policy before we open the door, so to speak.
Uh my issue with this is that uh first of all, SNY is a sports channel. And so I'm not really making a connection between um a Democratic Party debate and a sports channel as well as if you allow um one party debate, then you have to allow all the party debates. And so then you can't pick and choose who you decide is gonna come. So if the Communist Party comes and says, we want to have a a debate at your library, which they could anyway, but I'm just saying, then, you know, you have to be, you know, equal in the way that you determine whether or not somebody um is allowed to do it, because this isn't just a debate about voting. It's a political party debate. So that's I I just don't have enough information about SNY TV. And what Democratic Party debate is it?
Good question.
The seventeenth district, Sean Patrick.
The congressional.
Alessandro Biagi.
Okay, thanks.
I am now curious who's um who's sort of sponsoring the debate, because I I hadn't put together that that's the the sports network. And it does seem from what you sent Karen that it is them putting it on, but I don't know. But maybe it's, I guess that would be why they're looking, they're the ones looking for a place.
In the in the explanation that I sent you that they sent me, um they explained that Spectrum One News is the local cable news channel. Um part of the charter communication spectrum networks and they air across New York State.
And we don't even get Spectrum.
He works for Capital Tonight, which focuses on politics in New York, the gentleman who's making a request.
Yeah, I think Spectrum is the closest that Spectrum is is Lower Westchester. Yonkers, Mount Vernon, Bronx. I don't know. Uh again, I don't know exactly.
Um I also do want to say, you know, as far as as far as it goes with us, if we were to approve this, regardless of policy or or not policy, I think that we would have to be aware that there would be a significant impact on the folks' ability to use the library significantly more than we already have. Um so I think that would have to be a consideration as well. We would, there are some big programs that we have on that Tuesday um on Tuesdays. And Tuesdays and Wednesdays do tend to be heavier days during the week than some of the other days.
Then I think it's an easy no. Like it doesn't sound like there's a compelling enough reason in terms of the connection like with the candidates, with the debate, with like, and we already have limited use of the parking lot because of the spots that are blocked off, plus our lovely neighbors. Um so it seems to me like the priority has to be like our programming and there being space for folks to to come in, right? Like that plus the policy, I think. But I think the the part that's most compelling to me is like if we have programs that are big on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, like we want people to be able to come to them, and if that's already challenging, we don't want to make it more challenging um for something that we're kind of like doesn't fit within our policy and doesn't really feel like it would be something that adds significantly to the work that we're doing. Does that resonate with anyone?
Yeah, I agree with you.
No.
Are they asking that the for access to the theater uh space for extended hours beyond our normal schedule?
Um they're said they would have, they would want the theater space um to be set up on Tuesday during regular library hours, but it would be inaccessible um during on Tuesday. And then they say that they will be finished by closing on Wednesday. Um I'm not sure how realistic that is, but that's what they are saying.
Because if they just need like um central commands just be set up with their equipment somewhere, there are a lot of places in town that get contacted by production companies to use the parking lot and to use access to, you know, um meeting room and the bathrooms and and a kitchen. I mean, um Trinity Church Campus was used by a posse for one of their episodes and All Saints Church and um there was another one, oh, the Presbyterian Church. That's kind of normal business in town.
I think that's a good point that you've made, because there are other places.
That they make a donation when they want to use the property for these not-for-profits.
Yeah, actually, the Millwood Firehouse does the same thing.
Okay. So they have a lot of options. We're stretched. We're not really in a position to comfortably say yes, but there are other options. What's the matter, Megan?
I'm agreeing with you, like we're we're stretched.
I I think I'm hearing from the group that this is a no. Am I correct?
Correct.
Awesome, all right. I will get back to them. I'll have Jimmy get, he's been in contact. I'll have him get back to them tomorrow and let them know. Thank you, and I I appreciate um you allowing us to discuss it here. It's helpful to me.
And and maybe if he could give them a list of the other, some of the other places where people are holding this.
Yeah, he had he had made a few suggestions to them, but um I I will include some others.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And so now it is time to take a motion to adjourn our work session. Alice, thank you. Megan, thank you for seconding. And so we are adjourned this session as of five fifty-six PM. And so we are adjourned this session as of 5:56 PM.